Good morning. Welcome to the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, April fifteenth meeting. Looks like we have a crowd here today. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I ask Craig Slay, would you pray for us?
I'd be glad to. Let's pray. Father, we pause to acknowledge your blessings upon us, your presence here with us today. I thank you that these men have been willing, Lord, to use their skills and abilities that you give to them with to serve their fellow man. I pray that you'll give them what they need today, wisdom and discernment, so that they can make good and wise decisions. Help everything that is said and done here today be pleasing to you. And Father, help us to acknowledge and remember that we have so many in our community that are serving every day, to bless us, Lord, to protect us, to help us. Father, I pray that you would keep them protected, bring them home safely to their families in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I want to do a verbal prayer for one of our colleagues. Mr. Prentice Calhoun died this weekend, Brad's father. And can we just pause for a few seconds and say a prayer to ourselves and to God for the Calhoun family? Amen.
Thank you, Stacey.
We're gonna start off with public comment. Y'all are right out of the gate. We're gonna recognize Florence High School Eagle soccer teams, teams, and we're gonna start with the ladies. Twenty twenty-four champions, five A champions. Sid, you and Craig take it from here. This is in District One.
They're making my district look good. I pay it. Thank y'all for that. I appreciate y'all and I know the parents and the coaches. It takes a lot of, you know, hard work and time and dedication and I'm glad that y'all making Florence look good and District One look good. Hopefully, they can get some notes off this and get their teams a little bit better. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Board members, we have the privilege today to actually read through a resolution that's been executed by the Board of Supervisors in recognition of the soccer championship of Florence High School Lady Eagle Soccer Team. And so, I want to read this, but before I do that, I'd like for the coaches to come forward. I think that's gonna be Coach Hood and the assistant coaches Josh Kavanaugh and Danny Nelson. I want to recognize these guys. We may have administration. I came in late, so y'all forgive me for that. We may have some school administrators here as well, so I definitely want to recognize those folks that have been instrumental in helping these ladies get to the top of the heap for sure. Ladies, I'm gonna read this resolution. When you hear your name called, I want you to come forward and stand next to your coaches, okay? We're gonna get a picture, so y'all just have to kind of distribute yourselves as best you can. Most of the time, it works good if the tall ones get in the back and the less tall will get in the front. That works pretty good. Let me just say also a word of warning. If you hear your name called, and I have butchered it, pretend that I said your name right and come on, okay? If you can understand who it is that I called. And so, I'm gonna read this, gentlemen. This is a resolution that recognizes and congratulates the Florence High School Lady Eagle Soccer Team on their twenty twenty-four MHSAA Class Five A State Championship. Whereas, the Florence High School Lady Eagles won the twenty twenty-four Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class Five A Soccer State Championship by defeating former state champion Lafayette or Lafayette High School in a thrilling three-one championship game. This state title marks the school's sixth title overall. Twenty twelve, thirteen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-four. Sounds like we got a good thing going at Florence, and so, we want to keep that going. Whereas, this talented group of athletes competed at the highest level in a total team effort that resulted in a season record of twenty-four and one with a conference record of eight and oh. Members of the team are seniors Riley Raymond.
Here.
All right. All right. Riley, did you leave it all on the field?
You may have to be in the front, okay? Kaylee Lilly. And that right there is the two seniors. That's the senior class right there. You reckon the rest of the state's feeling a little bit bad about life right now? If that's two seniors. Juniors Caroline Sanford, Cameron Frazier. Junior class. I'm sensing a trend here. Sophomores Sidney O'Hare, Mary Elise Taylor, Kylie Clower, Kendall Patterson. Wendy, you're gonna have to help me, babe. Manchamee, thank you. Freshmen Ella Grace Sanford, Emma Marchant, Addison Grantham, Cameron Clower, Mary Grace Tomlinson, Lily Elbert. Eighth graders Jordan Quick, Katie Carroll, Brooke Bridges, Lily Banks. Seventh graders Regina Guzman, Mallory Jackson, Rayleigh Statham, Kylie Reynolds, Michaela Williamson, Harper Page, Callie Hickman, Delaney Cannon, Michaela Stevens, and Kylie Freemire. Okay, ladies. This is a challenge, isn't it?
Three rows, short legs, none of y'all in front, tall in the back.
Brooke, where's Brooke? Brooke? Can you show them how to get in that athletic position? You're not going to. Huh?
Guys, we always like to recognize our athletes, our scholar athletes, and so, I ask the coaches to put together a GPA calculation for us. And I always warn the coaches, I tell them, look, if it's not at a certain level, we don't, we're not gonna recognize. Unless they're meeting a certain standard, we're not even gonna say anything about that. The most impressive statistic compiled by the Florence High School Lady Eagle Soccer Team is their overall team GPA, three point eight two.
Wow.
Gentlemen, the rest of the resolution reads, "The Florence High School Soccer Coaching Staff is under the direction of Coach Bill Hood and Assistant Coaches Josh Kavanaugh and Danny Nelson. The administration of Florence High School is to be commended for its outstanding commitment to both academic and athletic success." Gentlemen, this resolution is dated today's date. It's been signed by all of the supervisors. It's been signed by our Chancellor Clerk, Mrs. Scarborough, who is, knows a little bit about District One Supervisor District as well. And so, we're, yeah, absolutely. So, we are really, really proud of you ladies. Congratulations on your excellent championship season. Coach, here's the original of the resolution. Thank y'all very much, ladies, for coming.
Hey, congratulations, girl.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, man, here, watch out, they might move y'all up now, man.
Joe, Joe. I called you back. Yeah. Well, we did.
Y'all ready to get the guys?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Joe.
I'll get it done.
So, we got that bug in here today on the senior. Have you talked to them again? Email? Man, I almost responded to it. I'm glad I didn't. How about that? Oh, wow. Happy days.
Hey, I'm not saying do it. Yes, do it.
You coaching, buddy?
I'm the assistant girls and head boys.
Okay. Great job, man. Great job.
It's interesting to pull the double.
Yeah. Okay, are we all in? Now, we're gonna recognize the men's twenty twenty-four state championship soccer. And I'm gonna, again, turn it over to our supervisor, Mrs. Scarborough, and Craig Slay.
I'd just like to congratulate y'all. Like I told the girls on your win, I think it's pretty amazing that we pulled two off, you know, and just congratulations to y'all and the coaches and to the parents on the job well done.
Gentlemen, we got a resolution that we want to, to display and publicize today, and so, I'm going to read this resolution. First, I'm gonna ask Coach Kavanaugh to be up here up front with us. And Coach Hood, why don't you come ahead? I think you're one of the assistant coaches on this team as well, if I recall correctly, and Danny Nelson as well. And so, I want the coaches to be up here. Guys, as I'm reading the resolution, I'm gonna walk through and by classification, I'm gonna call your name. I'm gonna try not to butcher your name, okay? If you hear your name and it sounds reasonably close, come on. And so, I'll call you guys as we read the resolution here. Gentlemen, again, this is a resolution that recognizes and congratulates the Florence High School Eagle Soccer Team on their twenty twenty-four MHSAA Class Five A State Championship. And so, I'm gonna read this resolution. Whereas, the Florence High School Eagles won the twenty twenty-four Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class Five A Soccer State Championship by defeating Lafayette High School, sounds familiar, in a thrilling two-to-one championship game. Lafayette's gonna, they're gonna like load up and come down to Florence and just make an issue out of this, right? Whereas, this talented group of athletes competed at the highest levels in competition, and they achieved a season record of sixteen, eight, and two, and a conference record of seven and one. The members of the team are seniors Devon Quick, you'll come forward, stand up here with the coaches. Leighton Boykin.
Missed the bus.
Okay. Jeremy Hefflin. Brian Laredo Salas. Zavion Quick. The juniors are Aiden Hemphill, Hayden Boykin, Garrett Watkins. Okay. Sophomores are Colby and Michelle. I'm gonna, I'm gonna butcher this. Is it UV? Did I get that right? Hot dog. UV, Laredo Salas, Joel Dykes, Saint Jordan, freshman Brady Remus, Ethan Miller, Luke Jones, Cooper Clark, Lorenzo Coleman, Kane Nelson, Cash Hus, Dawson Bishop, Chris Lyle, Jaden Zarate. Eighth graders Daniel Lynch, Reed Bishop, Bryson Sistrunk, Sawyer Chicorillo.
He's in Alabama enjoying a late Christmas present.
All right. Parker Tucker. Roll tide. Nicholas Guzman, Dane Hood, Brody Thomas, Emerson Burt. Coach, I've got the trainers on here. Kira Birch and Danielle Trailer. Wanted to recognize them as well. Gentlemen, as with, as with the ladies, we ask the coaches to put together the GPA, cumulative GPA for us, and just like the ladies, these guys have come through like champs. The most impressive statistic compiled by the Florence High School Eagle Soccer Team is their overall GPA, which stands at three point four-five.
Wow.
Gentlemen, this, this team has been recognized as an MHSAA all-academic team, and so, we were super proud of you guys for both your athletic success and your academic success. And it's a testimony to the leadership at Florence High School, the coaches, and insisting that you guys hit the books just as hard as you hit the pitch. So, congratulations.
And I want to say, as a graduate of Florence High School, I'm proud of you too.
Mark, was it five A's when you were there?
We had some four D's and...
That was good. Hey, guys, proud of y'all, how y'all making our district, my district, look good. Y'all doing good, hey. Our doing, we doing good.
Trust me, if I, me and Coach Hood, we're gonna try to run it back.
There we go. Good job, guys. Good job.
Hit the bus. Y'all have fun.
Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job, man.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Did you take one? Nope.
I don't think so.
Let's, let's adhere to our new policy. Just the guy that's on here is not here? Oh, okay. Brian, Matthew's sitting right behind you. You can communicate with him. Matthew, boy.
Hey, Keith, somebody, y'all wanna put that podium up?
Let's, let's adhere to our policy and not, we gotta be out. Okay. Let's, we're gonna go on into our agenda, and then we'll cover areas that you may be here about, okay? Well, Dr. Kenneth McCraney, is he here? Okay. And Mike Smith is not here. I'm cold. Okay, let's, old business, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve minutes for April first.
Brad makes a motion.
Second.
Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Consent agenda? Y'all have a chance to look over the consent? Jay makes a motion to approve the consent. Scott seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes for the consent. Ms. Gilbert, our tax collector.
Good morning.
Item A, request authority to destroy records that you have in the list on according to state statute.
Motion approved.
Brad makes a motion to approve.
I second.
Sid seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item B, authority to void twenty twenty-two tax bill and refund any tax sale purchasers for PPIN five-three-seven-eight-two, and the authority to reissue the tax bill, the twenty twenty-three tax bill to remove the special assessment of four thousand dollars.
I make a motion. Sid makes a motion.
Second.
Scott seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
And Stacy is in a class, so I was gonna do hers, too. Okay, item A, petition to adjust the twenty twenty-three homestead exemption supplemental rule.
Motion approved.
Brad makes a motion.
Second.
Scott seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item B, petition for change of assessments of twenty twenty-three real and personal property assessments.
Motion approved.
Was that Brad? Brad made a motion to approve.
Second.
Scott seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item C, authority to pay invoice from DLT Solutions LLC in the amount of six thousand two fifty-seven fourteen for the renewal of a one-year maintenance plan for AutoCAD licensing and authority to issue check.
Motion approved.
Jay makes a motion.
I second.
Sid seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item D, authority to accept the quote from Delta Computer Systems on Delta's paper link, you print only license fees and professional services in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I made a motion. Scott seconds. Any other discussion?
Yeah, how long before we swap over, start using a new software?
Oh, we're, we're...
Working on the financial end right now, and that's probably, what, next month?
We'll be wrapped up with the financial?
The financial side.
And then we'll be ready to...
No, like, we're not sold on it at this point.
That's first I heard that. I thought everybody was ready to swap and make this happen.
No. We've been having constant communication with data. They're, they're not where they need to be for our two offices in particular.
We can't have half our office use one software.
You can.
Well, I don't want us to, so...
We're focusing on the financial side right now, and once, once we've got that under control, we've swapped Justice Court with no problems, we've swapped payroll system, working on the financial now, and then we'll focus on the, the big one, which is the land records. We have a plan.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'll take the next section, if that's okay.
Purchasing clerk?
Yes, sir. Acknowledged additional one-year contract extension with law, Express Lawn and Landscape for the maintenance of our lawn.
Motion approved.
Jay makes a motion.
Second.
Scott seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Motion passes. Mr. Harris.
Sir, moving on. Got the Physical Water Association wanting to do a permit, install water line off of Stowe, Brooks, Jim, Hill, and Barnett Circle.
Scott makes a motion.
Second.
Okay. Sid seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Press approval of Center Point Energy to install a gas line between Water Edge and Bearway. District two, right.
Scott makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, engineer.
Morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
We have one item on the agenda. It is on LSBP sixty-one-six. We recommend an approval of subcontract number one to Atwood Fence Company, Inc. That's on the Curse Road Bridge. They'll be installing the guardrail for that.
I make a motion to approve.
Brad makes a motion. Jay seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Is anyone here from Benchmark? Yes, sir. There he is.
Good morning. I'm Lon Burke from Benchmark Engineering and Surveying. We have two items on the agenda. First item, item A, county took bids on Hog Creek Bank Stabilization near Amanda Drive on March eighteenth. We had two bids. The low bid was Hope Enterprises LLC in the amount of five hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
We got all of our signatures we needed, so I'm ready to move forward. I make the motion to approve.
Jay makes a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Scott seconds that motion.
Item B.
Any, just, any, any discussion?
Is that kinda in the same ballpark what we figured it was gonna be?
I don't really know. I think it's a lot less, actually.
Anybody got that number?
Yeah, it was, it was less than...
Come in under.
Engineer estimate.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Now then, Oak Grove.
Item B is the Oak Grove Bank Stabilization Project. The county took bids on April eleventh and received two bids. The low bid was Southeastern Pipeline and Environmental Services in the amount of four million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
And luckily, we've got about all of them done. We lacked two, and that's it. So, we'll get those knocked down or knocked out before we get ready to go. So, I would like to thank our staff here. Women did a great job convincing some of these people, so. And it's under the estimate. I didn't say it's gonna finish under the estimate, but it did come in up underneath our original goal, so I make the motion to approve.
So, he makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brad seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. I do, I want to say, some of these numbers, they are large. They're large to us. These projects have been planned and working on for years, and it's, while we're not looking like we're surprised, it's things that have to be done, and we're getting them done. And it is, it is federal dollars backing us up.
Or brand state dollars.
Yep, yep.
It's both the county's ARPA dollars and the state of Mississippi's ARPA dollars combined together to help us with all of these projects. to help us with all of these projects. Gentlemen, uh, first item under my section is to set public hearings. If I may, I would appreciate a motion to set items A, B, and C under my section, which are all May 2, 9 a.m. hearing dates on nuisance property considerations, A, B, and C.
I make a motion to set A, B, and C from May the 2nd. Second.
All right. Brad makes a motion. Jay seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item D is to set a public hearing from May 6th, 9 a.m. This is a conditional use permit request. Joseph Smith.
I make a motion, set that from May the 6th.
All right. Brad makes a motion. Jay seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Gentlemen, item E under my section is a public hearing for the Iona Gilder Conditional Use Permit at 204 Meadowlark Drive. It's a District III property. I'm going to open that public hearing.
That's a District five.
What did I say?
Three.
My bad. District five. Uh, Ms. Gilder is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental at 204 Meadowlark Drive. The property is located in Barnett Bend, two subdivisions, owned R1B. Ms. Gilder plans to follow a rigorous safety and security protocol to ensure guests and neighbors are, uh, not dissatisfied with this use. She will be available by phone 24 hours a day, seven days a week. She has a list of rules and requirements that are posted inside the home. The hearing notice was published and the property was posted. The Office of Community Development has received no calls in opposition. So at this time, I will ask for any person here today to speak in opposition to the Iona Gilder Conditional Use Permit Request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. So the only condition that would be, uh, relevant today would be that Ms. Gilder will comply with Rankin County Short-Term Rental Ordinance that was adopted March the 4th, 2024. So at this time, it'll be appropriate to take action. That public hearing is closed.
It is, yeah. I make most to approve.
I second Jay's motion.
All right. Jay makes a motion. Scott seconds the motion. Any other discussion? I, I do want, uh, we have adopted, uh, ordinances that have more foundation, have more requirements, uh, on these type rental. And from what I understand, this application fits. It fits the ordinance and Jay, the supervisor is satisfied. So, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item under my section is a public hearing on the Melinda Simmons and Clyde Warren-Helmer Conditional Use Permit at 195 Fannin Landing Circle. This is a District II property. We will open that public hearing. Ms. Simmons and Mr. Helmer are seeking a conditional use permit to operate a personal care home in an existing home at 195 Fannin Landing Circle. This is a 4.37 acre parcel. It's owned RE1. They are proposing a personal care home for elderly individuals with one caregiver and three residents. They will offer comprehensive assisted living services, including 24-hour care, assistance with daily activities, meals, social activities, and medical supervision. A license is not required by the Mississippi State Department of Health, where the proposed use will have less than, three or less occupants. The hearing notice was published and the property was posted. A 420-page petition and 21 emails were received by the Office of Community Development in opposition to this conditional use request. That public hearing is open. At this time, I think it would be appropriate to have the applicant for the conditional use request, uh, or their representatives to come forward at this time and to explain to the board how they meet the requirements of our conditional use application procedures under our zoning ordinance. After that, Mr. President, we will have an opportunity for individuals who desire to address the board, who are in opposition to this request, to do so. Typically, what we like to see is that the comments are kept to a minimum and kept relevant to the application. We like to see no more than three minutes, uh, to address the board, uh, at any point. If an individual addresses the board in opposition to the application and other individuals have nothing further to add, we would ask that there be no attempt to speak or continue to say the same thing over and over again. If the issue has already been addressed, then, uh, then that should be sufficient. But anybody that wants to speak in opposition, obviously, is welcome to do so. So at this time, we'll ask the applicant to come forward and to state the basis for the justification for the conditional use application.
Good morning.
I'm Melinda Simmons.
And I'm Clyde Warren-Helmer.
And we had an idea for a different way to do residential assisted living for the elderly. We went about the process of purchasing a home that was not located in any sort of subdivision, under any sort of homeowners association, on a piece of land. We began the process of remodeling that home so that it would be more accessible to elderly. And we were told, we found out that we needed a special use permit, which we have since requested reasonable accommodations for. But the county, it was my understanding that the county has required us to get a conditional use permit. So we filed the application, we completed the process, and that's why we're here in front of you today.
We'd love to answer any questions that you have, of course.
Well, I, yeah, the first question was, I really didn't like the email that y'all sent all of us. I didn't think that was very appropriate, but, you know, I was.
It was sent in the most respectful way that.
And that was my opinion on the response of it, you know? But, uh, as y'all, when y'all first come in, you asked for, you know, personal care home. Then the way the email read, it was more, you know, kind of addressed a different scenario on some of that stuff.
We'd heard many, many opinions since appearing in front of everyone that day. So we wanted to address some other issues as well.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions? Thank you. Do you have any other comments you want to make?
Uh, well, we would love, uh, an opinion on the reasonable accommodation. Uh, I don't know where that falls.
The board's going to make its decision after we hear from those who.
So it's still open for public comment?
Okay, you are excused.
Thank you.
Mr. President, this time, we will invite anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this request to come forward at this time. Uh, as I stated, just for clarity, uh, try to, try to listen to the comments that are being made. And if, uh, if any individual feels like the comments in opposition have already been addressed, then we can avoid repeating the same thing over and over.
Craig. After we have some, if you are one of those that are sitting there and listening and say, well, he said what I wanted to say. I think we will give you an opportunity for us to say, if you are in opposition and you've already heard what you want to say, stand. Not right now. Listen to what the first one said and, in respect to everybody's time, we will notice who's standing. Okay? Thank you. Come on.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cory Howell. Uh, my address is 217 Allen Drive, and, uh, I'm located in the Cottonwood subdivision. I'm the current HOA president. And so I am here speaking on behalf of the neighborhood directly behind the property. I have several of the residents here today with me. Um, I represent 44 homes, and we are all in agreement that we do not want this to take place. Uh, we have collected, uh, over 200 signatures that I would like to share with you. I don't know if I can bring that up to.
Put those right over there in front of this, Renee.
Trying to keep it brief and factual, uh, we're a predominantly residential neighborhood. And this would change the demeanor of the area. And what we have seen in other places that have allowed this, it has a negative impact on the home values. Also, what we have seen, um, there are several articles that show because these are unlicensed, uh, facilities, it creates a greater risk to the residents. There are several articles in North Mississippi where this has happened. And there are two states, Tennessee and Texas, who are actively trying to ban these because of the unlicensed nature that they pose, which really is a greater threat to the residents. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Next.
Hello. My name is Zach Vargis. I live in Cottonwood, at 213 Allen Drive. I also own the two-acre lot next to the proposed unlicensed, um, personal care facility. And, um, I would just like to say that I've received the email from their realtor, Elise Jones. Um, Elise stated that they knew that this property was not zoned for a personal care facility before they purchased it. I also spoke to the Mississippi Department of Health. They have not had that, um, treatment plan serviced and inspected, um, which is a state law that must occur before the transfer ownership of the property. And, um, also found out that they had, um, attained a conventional loan to purchase the property. And when I spoke to the bank, they told me that they cannot have a conventional loan to purchase that property as a primary or secondary home. And if it is rezoned, that bank is going to recall the loan. And unless they have the means to secure additional financing, then we're going to have a foreclosure right smack slap in the middle of our subdivision where houses are selling between $500,000 and $600,000. And I do not want to live next to an unlicensed personal care facility, and I do not want them there. Thank you.
Next, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, it's been stated that people in opposition have a.
Name and address.
Michael Lenore, 103 Lawrence Drive. It's been stated that people in opposition have a chance to speak. I'm not in opposition. Do I have a chance to speak?
Yes.
Great. So I live at 103 Lawrence Drive in the Cottonwood subdivision, and my property adjoins the land that is the subject of today's hearing. So for most of the last 15 years, I look at my backyard and I see property that's been overgrown with junk, piles of debris, rotten trees, and an abandoned 10-foot satellite dish. It has been an eyesore and a disgrace for this entire time. It's been so bad that I've taken it upon myself to maintain the, the half acre between my property and theirs, just so I can maintain a border between our property. Now, I'm aware that there are other businesses in the area, like Consulting Forester, the Community Garden, the Dog Kennel, and the Abandoned Landscape Company down the road. I'm also aware that there are other derelict properties in the area, like the property directly across the street. So as far as I know, no one has been complaining or taking action against these businesses or properties. And if the zoning or enforcement rules are designed to prop up the values of our properties, I don't know that it's been working as good as it could. I have met personally with Melinda and Warren and have learned some detail about their plans. I understand that the house will remain a house and that the property and landscaping will be maintained in a manner consistent with the neighborhood. I understand that there will be no neon signs, large parking lots, or increase in traffic. So under these conditions, I support any zoning that would allow this business to operate and would welcome them enthusiastically into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else which should speak in opposition or in favor?
State your name.
My name is Hilda White, and I had no intentions of talking today, but I live at 222 Fannin Landing Circle across the street. And yes, there are some properties that might be in, um, poor condition because of a family member, so forth. But, um, I have three sisters. We have lived in the community since 1978. 1977. My three sisters are still in the area. We are all in agreement that we do not want rezoning in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Others?
All right. At this time, if you're in opposition, then please stand. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like for the record to reflect that we've received, uh, a copy of the petition in opposition from the Cottonwoods HOA. At this time, I'd ask if there's anyone, any other representative of an HOA or part of the community in that area that has anything that needs to be a part of this record? Petition or anything, any documentation? Anybody got anything like that? Okay. Mr. President, I don't see anyone.
Just want to mention other neighborhoods surrounding us.
It's included. Okay, very good. Thank you. So I said Cottonwoods. It actually is a composite of several HOAs that have gone together for purposes of the petition. Uh, gentlemen, I think at this time, it'd be appropriate to, uh, to give the proponent, the applicant, an opportunity to address some of the concerns. I want the applicant to have an opportunity to establish, uh, the, the basis for the rezoning request, for the conditional use request. And so I'm going to give them an opportunity to come forward at this time and address anything that they've heard, if they want to. You don't have to.
So we knew there was opposition. We knew that going in. What I think people might not be considering is that everyone needs a place to go as they age. And maybe some of you are dealing with it right now as your parents get older. They want a place to go that's a home. They don't want to be forced to go to a commercial zone or an industrial area. They don't want to live in a property where there may be 50, or 60, or 200, or 300 other people. Maybe they just want to live with a couple of other people with a 24-hour caregiver. People deserve to live where they want to live, and especially those who are elderly. I have a lot to say. And I'm having trouble. We are talking about four people. We are talking about a normal house. I understand that people are upset because they may not understand what we're doing. It is scary. It is unknown. But we don't see ourselves as being disruptive. We are not turning this house into a commercial area. We're not adding a gas station or a liquor store. We're just giving a home to a couple, several people who want a home. Most people have lived the majority of their lives in a home, in a residential area. And maybe that's where they'd like to stay. I don't think anyone should have to be forced to live somewhere where they don't want to live. We're not requesting any sort of financial, we're not creating a financial hardship for the county, the city. We're not asking for any special consideration other than this particular zoning action. We thought we were just complying with the rules when we applied for the permit. The house is going to remain a single-family residence. Only four people will live there, just like in our house. The average home has 10 comings or goings a day. We anticipate ours to be much less than that. There's so many things. I know Mike spoke to the fact that the house has not been as well taken care of recently.
Three minutes. Just kind of wrap it up.
The Fair Housing Act makes it unlawful to refuse, refuse reasonable accommodations to rules, policies, practices, or services when such accommodations may be necessary to afford persons with disabilities an equal opportunity to use or enjoy dwelling. That's, elderly people have the right to live where they want to live, and that's all we're trying to do.
Will y'all be living there?
We will not live there.
Where do y'all, where do y'all live?
Where do y'all, where do y'all live at?
We will live in our current home.
And how close is it to this property?
It's in Ridgeland, Mississippi.
It's in Ridgeland, Mississippi.
Do y'all own any other of these types of facilities?
We do not.
Not these. We have a real estate background.
All right. Are we ready to take action?
Yes, sir. I believe so. So the staff has a few things to say. First and foremost, gentlemen, I want to walk you through our process for evaluating and then making a decision relative to a conditional use application. While that is a zoning matter in terms of context, it's something short of an actual rezoning of the property. So I'm going to address that on the front end. There's no intention to rezone this parcel of property. It will remain residential estate one from the zoning classification. It's residential in its orientation. It's residential in its, in its nature. It is surrounded by residential properties. So this action is actually a conditional use permit that would allow a use that is not outright residential in its nature. I want to start there. This is not a residential use. It may look like one. It may sort of behave like one, but it does not fit within a residential context, hence the need for a conditional use to make it something that has trappings of commercial activity. That's what's happening here. That's why you're having to address this. Whenever you are confronted with an application to consider a conditional use where a specific zoning request or a specific land use request does not fit within the definition that the property is zoned, whenever you're confronted with that, you have to go through a, an analysis. Your zoning ordinance walks you through the steps that you have to make and take, and the information that needs to be provided to you by the applicant in order for you to fully evaluate whether or not to grant or deny an application for a conditional use. So I want to remind you of what those considerations are. Number one, you have to receive a written application. That's been done. It indicates the section in the ordinance under which a conditional use is sought, and it states the grounds for which the use is requested, okay? Board of Supervisors is not allowed to grant a conditional use unless satisfactory provision and arrangement has been made concerning the following. You need to evaluate ingress and egress to the property and to the structures that are there, with particular reference to vehicular and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow and control, and access in case of fire or catastrophe. That's number one. Number two, off-street parking or loading areas, if that applies. Some of these won't apply, some do. Refuse and service areas, that's number three. Utilities with reference to location, availability, and compatibility. Number five, screening and buffering with reference to type, dimension, and character. My understanding is that there's been no, there's been no suggestion that there will be any screening or vegetated buffering around this parcel. Required yards or other open spaces. This is the big one. General compatibility with adjacent properties and other properties in the district. General compatibility with adjacent properties and other property in the district. And then you are allowed, through a catch-all provision, to consider any other provision of your ordinance that is deemed applicable in the circumstances. So it's a, it's a pretty thorough investigation that you're required to go through. And so I want to address some of those that I think applies based on some of the opposition statements that you've heard. In particular, what you've heard of the general tenor of the commentary from those who are in opposition is that this proposed use will not be compatible to the area that's adjacent. And so what you've heard is this is a residential context, this is a residential setting, and the opening up of a permission so that something that has trappings of commercial activity could in fact affect, materially affect, the residential uses that are adjacent. So that's, that's the issue that I think you're primarily confronted with. There are others. I think there's still some uncertainty with respect to the parking situation and with respect to the amount of traffic that may or may not be coming in and out of here. And so the board will need to wrestle with the idea, is this use, proposed use, in fact, compatible with adjacent properties? And if the answer to that appears to be no, then you would be on solid ground legally to reject the application on that basis and that basis alone. Any of these that fail the test are sufficient to deny the application. It's why they are listed the way that they are, and it's why there is no and in between any of these. You may select which of these apply and which do not. I want to address one other issue because it was raised by the applicant through an email that was generated and sent to each of you guys. The, the email suggested that, that you were prohibited from undertaking any analysis in your zoning ordinance unless and until you have made some sort of accommodation under the Fair Housing Act for those who are handicapped. And so I want to address that directly at this juncture as a part of this proceeding, as a part of this hearing. The applicants have not proven, have not demonstrated, that the residents, the proposed residents that they have anticipating being resident within this structure will be handicapped within the meaning of the Fair Housing Act. They haven't presented any proof that they intend to have a handicapped individual there as that term is defined in the Fair Housing Act. They don't know who the residents would be. They couldn't possibly know. You have not granted permission for this use to take place here. So I don't know how you could accommodate anything under the Fair Housing Act without that information. They have not shown age or handicapped status to be a prerequisite to an admission to this facility. They have not identified any specific individuals who reside there and have not provided any data regarding the residents and any other house, any other location in our communities that is either labeled Magnolia House or part of that system. They've not demonstrated any of that. It's not clear what legal entity will operate this facility. While the applicants identify themselves as the owners, and they have named this facility Magnolia House, those names are not associated with any entity that is currently licensed with Mississippi Secretary of State's office. And, and we don't know, from, from the county's perspective, we don't know what that affiliation is, if any. It's not a part of the application. It would be nice to know that. The applicants have not shown how living in a single-family neighborhood will ameliorate, that means reduce, any alleged handicap suffered by the residents. Number three, being old by itself is not a handicap. Some of us are getting closer and closer to understanding that more and more fully. The, this facility also will not be licensed by the Mississippi State Department of Health. And I think that was raised, I want to point that out, that was raised as a concern in the petition in opposition to this request. It will in fact be an unlicensed facility. And so you heard that, that request being made. And so that is something that I think is important to make sure that is a part of this hearing. And if I didn't say it before, the petition itself has been marked and has been staged here and will be a part of this record of this hearing. And so with that information, gentlemen, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing, and it's also appropriate for the board to take action.
Public hearing is closed? All right. I think that we've heard from the community, we've heard from the applicants. In my opinion, it fails many tests for the application. Craig's listed several, many. I'm going to make a motion that we denied.
And I'll second that motion.
All right. I've made the motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. That we denied. Let this also be known, we have denied it. Please don't come back and say, well, we can put this screen up, or we can, we have denied it in this location. It is not, you can call it a single-family dwelling, but it's not a single family living there. Thank you.
Steve, thank you for pointing that out. Under Section 705 of our zoning ordinance, once the board denies a matter that is in the nature of a zoning request, there's a 12-month stay on any additional activity with respect to that parcel of property as it relates to zoning. I just wanted to state that for the record. There will be no action available to the applicant or the parcel owner for a period of 12 months from today's date, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. If you were here for this matter, you're excused, and we've got any more things on our agenda to move on to.
Item G under my section is a public hearing on the Scott Stewart Central Mississippi Coors Conditional Use Permit at 735 Highway 468. This is a District 3 property. I'll open that public hearing. Mr. Stewart is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a scrap metal business in an existing 30-by-30 building that is at 735 Highway 468. It's 4.40 acre parcels, property zoned RE1. Mr. Stewart was approved of this use on an adjoining parcel in February of 2023. He's proposing to move the location to the building that is on the same property as his, as his home is located. Everything will be stored inside the building. Hours of operation are three days a week, 7:30 to 5:30. Mr. Stewart provided pictures that shows compliance with the conditions that were set for the February 23 approval. The hearing notice was published, property was posted, and the Community Development Office has received no calls that are in opposition on this matter. At this time, I'll open that public hearing, I think I already did. If there's anyone here to speak in opposition on Mr. Stewart's conditional use permit, please step forward. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on the matter. Staff does not have any, do we have any conditions, Renee?
Same.
Same conditions? So that's what we would do, is just simply ask for a motion that establishes same conditions.
We hadn't received any kind of complaints on the previous, what he was doing.
All right, are we?
I'll make the motion.
Is the hearing closed?
Yes, we'll, we'll close that public hearing. It's time, it's appropriate to take action.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Jay Brad makes motion to approve.
Second.
Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item H, gentlemen, is a public hearing on the Robert Covington Conditional Use Permit at 4018 Highway 49 South. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. Mr. Covington is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a fireworks stand in an existing 4,800-square-foot metal building at 4018 Highway 49 South. So 3.16 acre parcel, Zone C3. The sale of fireworks is listed as a conditional use in the C3 zone. The hearing notice was published, and the property was posted. The Community Development Office has received no calls in opposition on this matter. And so, Renee, do we have anything on that one, conditions? Did you? Hang on. Here it is. Gentlemen, we do have our standard conditions that go along with these, and I'll just, I'll quickly go through those. Got to comply with the fireworks ordinance and all requirements therein in accordance with 4513-9, the Mississippi Code. No fireworks can be sold or offered for sale before the 15th day of June of any year or the 5th day of July, or before the 5th day of December and after the 2nd day of January. And I, I think Mr. Covington's very familiar with all of that. Don't expect any issues, but those would be the conditions. At this time, we'll close that public hearing unless the board has any questions. It would be appropriate to take action.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sid makes a motion. Jay seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item I is a public hearing on the Pisgah Water Association Conditional Use Permit at 3598 Highway 471. This is District 2 property. We'll open that public hearing. Pisgah Water is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a water well and a future 90-foot water tank with two fiberglass storage structures. The property is located at 3598 Highway 471, so 3.728 acre parcel zoned RE1. The hearing notice was published, the property was posted, the Community Development Office has received no calls in opposition. At this time, that hearing is open. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Pisgah Water Association Conditional Use Permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action. I would like to also say I haven't received any, any communications either, and I'll make the motion.
All right. Scott makes a motion. I second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item J, Mr. President, is a public hearing for Joseph Hindle Conditional Use Permit at 1324 Tricken Bridge Road. It's a District 4 property. That hearing is open. Mr. Hindle is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a 1,480-square-foot home with metal siding. This will be at 1324 Tricken Bridge Road, a 2.08 acre parcel, property zoned RE1. RE1 does not allow for a metal exterior. The sides of the home will be burnished slate-colored metal. The front and rear will be wood siding. The hearing notice was published, property was posted, the Community Development Office has received no calls in opposition on this matter. That hearing is open. I'll ask at this time if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Joseph Hindle Conditional Use Permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'll be appropriate to take action.
All right. I have a couple of questions, Renee. It meets all of our other requirements, other than needing conditional for the side. That's correct. It's not in a platted subdivision. Yep.
Was the end of it?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
And I've seen pictures. It's nice.
Can you see it?
You can't see the two-acre piece, huh?
Yep.
If that was, it would be visible to you.
Okay.
No, I can. I don't need that part.
I'll make the motion.
You're a good part of the road, huh?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Brad seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
All right. Gentlemen, item K under my section is I'm requesting authority from the board to publish notice for fleet management services. This is, this is something that has been the subject of discussion with your staff and primarily with the sheriff's office, but it could have much farther-reaching implications later. We have seen over the last probably three years, I would say.
Yep.
We have seen a significant difficult, we've had a lot of difficulty with access to particular types of, especially law enforcement vehicles, patrol vehicles in particular. The, the market has been so janky with, with chips and supply chain and all that stuff that we have been hearing about, that we, we simply don't have access to quality vehicles that can backfill the sheriff's needs for additional patrol units. And so we, the sheriff has done a masterful job of locating vehicles wherever he can find them, but most of the time, they're not new vehicles, they're used. And so the fleet has, has been put into a profile where we don't have a lot of new units available to us. This is a program that will be voluntary. This will be the board's prerogative to police, but it will give us access to a fleet management type of service arrangement that provides for primarily a leasing opportunity of new units that could result in a significant cost reduction over time for the carrying costs associated with these. Okay? So this does nothing but So this does nothing but allow for a process to evaluate whether or not that's a good thing.
So we have to bid it out?
It does have aspects of bidding that are required. It is not a pure service under Mississippi law. And so we have a plan to do a proposal that qualifies as both an RFP and as a bid proposal. And so the answer to your question is yes, but it's not a typical bid process that we would see, Jay. There's a good bit of flexibility that's built into this program that will allow it to serve for multiple series, several years. It allows for a successful service provider to actually be able to evaluate the needs of a particular county department and make recommendations concerning when particular vehicles in the fleet are ready to be put back into a market position, take advantage of the value, and then realize a new vehicle under a similar lease arrangement with some cost reduction associated with that. We anticipate that there will be a significant cost savings just in the sheriff's department if you go in that direction. Again, you're not being asked to make a formal decision today about utilizing this. This just simply allows for the process to give us that option should you choose to, to use it.
Craig, if I understand you, if we go this route, we're not under contract that we cannot buy a vehicle outside of this?
No, sir.
All right.
Gives you more opportunity to expand.
Just another option now.
Along with fleet management?
Yes. There's, there's a number of, there are a number of services that go along with this that we currently don't have access to that could be beneficial.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Jay makes a motion. Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item L, gentlemen, is a discussion of an action authorized the execution of a support letter on the Fannie Cook Parkway. This is City of Flowood. You guys recall that the City of Flowood had requested just a simple support letter from the Board of Supervisors indicating its support for this project. This is a road project that could substantially address some of the City of Flowood traffic issues that we have on the north side of Lakeland and provide some additional access all the way back to, to Old Fannin. And so it's, it seems to be a, a project worthy of our attention from the county's perspective, and at the current time, you are only being requested a written authorization to support. There is no funding request associated with this at this time.
All right, this is, I believe, all in the city limits of Flowood.
Yes.
No, it does come into camp.
There's a small portion that does implicate unincorporated camp.
And by executing this, we are under no financial obligation.
Just by doing what's before you now. If that happens, it'll have to happen with separate action at a later date.
All right, do I have a motion?
Second.
Jay, Jay makes a motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item M, gentlemen, is a ratification of a declaration of local emergency pursuant to the Emergency Management Law effective April 9, 2024. Approval of all county emergency purchases occasioned by local flooding emergency. Authority to issue purchase orders as required. Authority to issue checks to pay for all emergency purchases. It's the rain event of last week is what this is addressing, and this would be a ratification of that declaration.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Scott makes a motion. Jay seconded the motion. Any other discussion?
I have one question. Do they need to suspend or end the emergency declaration?
It's gonna, it's gonna terminate on 30 days regardless, and so your, part of your motion, Scott, will simply be recognition that unless you renew that at the end of 30 days, it automatically expires with no additional action.
I thought I said that, I'm sorry.
Very good, thank you, Scott.
All right. All in favor? Motion passes.
Gentlemen, I, I do have items in executive session that we need to address, and so I just wanted to put you on notice about that.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Craig.
Item A is approval to accept the DEQ grant. It's a waste tire collection program in the amount of $100,000 in authority for the board president to execute those documents.
And you did say we receive a grant?
Yes, sir.
And Keith, how much do we go over that $100,000 a year?
I think we generally don't spend it all, and it carries forward.
Okay.
It's a three-year grant.
Okay.
All right, Jay made a motion.
Second.
Brad seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item B is acknowledged receipt of our Chantry Clerks 2023 monies in the amount of $633,551.
So moved.
Scott makes a motion.
Second.
Brad seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item C likewise is acknowledged receipt of excess fee income from our Circuit Clerk's Office for 2023 in the amount of $84,841.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. Second.
Sid makes a motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item D is, let me give you a little background. We're upgrading our permitting software in our community development through discussion with iWorks, which is the same company we use for our road department software. They're going to go ahead and implement it, give it to us under contract, but we don't have to pay until starting in October. So we're asking for authority to execute documents, either myself or the board president, for a three-year agreement for the iWork software for our community development department. It'll be a $15,000 annual contract.
That's approved.
Jay makes a motion.
Second.
Scott seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. We have, anyone have any additional business that we need to discuss? All right.
Hey, where's Stewart?
Hey.
He's unexpectedly gone.
We have a need?
Yes, sir.
Executive.
Yes, sir. I've got litigation update, I've got acquisition of property update, two, two different versions of that.
I'll make the motion, discuss the need for executive session.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Jay makes a motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
I make a motion, go to executive session for litigation, property acquisition.
All right, Jay makes a motion.
Second.
Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? We are...